Good afternoon, and welcome to the November 6, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good afternoon. Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Desmond, Frost, Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV, U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, November 10th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetrolCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, will you please join me in a moment of silence? I mean the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughter)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, please.
Your first item is public comments related to matters not on the posted agenda. We do not have anyone signed up to speak for off-agenda matters.
Thank you.
Okay, and for item two, this is the adoption of the community-wide Climate Action Plan. Do you want me to lift it up?
I got it.
You got it? Okay.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I will say it's nice to be back in an afternoon session. Just me today. First, I want to start by saying this is hopefully the end of a lengthy process with the Climate Action Plan. I know you all have been anxiously awaiting this coming back to you. I would like to note, it's not just me here today. We have our consultants from Ascent Environmental and ESA available to answer any technical questions should they arise. But first, I'm just going to go through the staff presentation, and then I'm going to take a few minutes to address some inaccurate statements that you may have been receiving over email. So I'll do that toward the end of my presentation. Oh, just one screen today. All right. So, just by way of background, for those who don't know, the general plan, Sacramento County's 2030 General Plan, guides land use and planning in the unincorporated county. The last time the general plan was updated was in 2011. That action included an environmental impact report, as required by CEQA, that evaluated all the environmental effects of potential growth that was considered at that time. That was consistent with what was proposed in the 2030 General Plan. As it relates to the Climate Action Plan, we, that EIR identified a significant impact associated with greenhouse gas emissions associated with that growth. There was, or there were rather, two mitigation measures included in that EIR. Mitigation Measure CC1, which modified the general plan to include this policy LU115 that identified a goal that would help the county achieve the state's, at least then-current goal of reducing GHG emissions to 1990 levels by the year 2020. Obviously, 2020 has come and gone. We did achieve that goal as a county, and that goal was established in AB32, the original legislation. So no further action related to CC1 is required, so we'll move on to mitigation measure CC2. And that measure was one that required preparation of this Climate Action Plan and specified certain implementation measures, including when the county must adopt a cap, what were the required elements of the cap, and then what was the necessary inventory frequency to evaluate the county's ongoing GHG emissions. That mitigation measure, CC2, was incorporated into the general plan as implementation measures FGHINJ of that policy LU115 that I mentioned. Which brings us to the steps the county has taken to comply with that mitigation measure and that general plan policy. So concurrent with the adoption of the general plan update in 2011, the Board at the time also adopted the Climate Action Plan Strategy and Framework document, the Phase 1 cap, as we call it. And that really was just an overarching complementary plan to address climate change and provide a framework for reducing GHG emissions. A little less than a year later, September of 2012, the Board opted, adopted, excuse me, the cap for government operations. We call that Phase 2A. This was quantifying specifically GHG emissions from the county's operations. So when we're talking about county operations, we're talking about county facilities, our buildings, our county vehicles, and equipment. And then that cap also identified measures to reduce those specific emissions. Moving forward, in 2016, we began work on the community-wide or comprehensive Climate Action Plan. As you know, we've had multiple public drafts over the years in 21, 2021 and 22. There were several of those drafts publicly circulated for review, and we landed at the Board in September of 2022. The Board declined to adopt the cap at that point. There were a number of reasons for that, one being the then-drafted 2022 Climate Change Scoping Plan that the California Air Resources Board was set to adopt later that year. There was also pending legislation, AB1279, which set a longer-term greenhouse gas reduction target in 2045. So, moving forward, this is just a summary real briefly of the public engagement that's led us to this point. More details of this are included in the cap, Appendix A. But this cap is the result of 40-plus meetings with stakeholders, a number of public workshops, and over 14,700 subscribers to our Climate Action Plan topic via GovDelivery. So the 2024 cap is what we're calling this, and what we've done, and I'm going to go into more detail as we go through the presentation, but most of the revisions in this cap are directly in response to those public comments we received in 2022. We have very clearly identified specific actions for each of the greenhouse gas reduction measures, as well as the adaptation measures. We've got a very detailed implementation monitoring reporting strategy and in-depth cost analysis for the first five years of capital implementation. We have demonstrated compliance with the 2022 Climate Change Scoping Plan, as well as AB1279. This cap includes two target years. The first one is for 2030. That is consistent with SB32. The second target year is 2045, which is consistent with AB1279. We have also used an updated greenhouse gas inventory. That was one of the criticisms of the prior effort. We used an updated inventory as a new baseline year because it was more current information. And I will say thank you to John Lundgren and his Civic Spark fellow for helping with that. The other thing that we did in this 2024 cap is we used an updated growth forecast that includes reasonably foreseeable growth. This, again, was in direct response to comments from environmental groups asking the county to include those projects that were pending at the time, some are still pending, in our growth forecast to make sure we capture their associated emissions.
Excuse me, Todd.
Yes.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry to interrupt, Todd, but I just, those dates are an important thing for me to get my head fully wrapped around. So in the bullet there that talks about compliance with AB32 by 2030, that's the GHG reduction amount that has nothing to do with the aspirational carbon neutrality?
That is correct. SB32 sets a legislative target for jurisdictions in the state to achieve by that calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
And the same is true of AB1279 for 2045. All right, so this graph, this pie chart, is really the context for greenhouse gas emissions in the unincorporated county. So what you're looking at is this chart showing all of the different sectors of greenhouse gas emissions. You can very clearly see that blue on the right side is our on-road vehicles, 44.3%. That's our transportation emissions. The other two biggest sectors are building energy, whether that's residential in the darker purple, 21%, or commercial industrial building energy at 13, just over 13%. So between those two, the transportation and the residential and commercial building energy, those are the two biggest sectors we have. All of the rest of these are fairly minor, but not so minor that we should discount them The right side of the slide shows the metrics of what those targets are. Our 2021 inventory as baseline, 4.2 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent. This, again, represents the most complete and recently available data that we have when we started this revision. The 2030 reduction target is 39% below the 2021 levels, and that is 2.5 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent. The 2045 target per AB1279 is 0.7 million metric tons. So moving on into the meat of the cap, the greenhouse gas emission reduction framework includes a number of these features, if you will. So we've got each of the measures, which are numbered. These are the focused, sector-specific programs and goals. Those are supported by very specific actions, so GHG, for example, for A, B, C, D, et cetera. These are the more specific policies, programs, or tools that help us implement in a very coordinated manner that will altogether help us achieve the measure's goal. And each of these measures have these six different categories identified on the slide that demonstrate how the cap implementation will be consistent with CEQA, as well as that mitigation measure CC2 that I started with. So what that means is each measure has an implementation mechanism. That's either a new program, an ordinance, or some other regulatory approach. There are elements of public engagement and community partnerships that include outreach, information dissemination, education, and implementation support. There is a performance standard for each measure. That is simply doing something, doing an X thing defined by each measure by a certain date. Pretty clear. The fourth is a tracking mechanism. That's either an existing process that we have that will track implementation over time, or setting up a new process for tracking. Number five, an implementation timeline. This is specific to when an action needs to start, when it needs to be in place or finished, and then which subactions are dependent on each other, showing the relationship of each step. And then finally, the funding mechanism for each measure, whether that comes out of existing budget or staff resources, or potentially new budget, external funding from the county, grants, fees, additional staff, et cetera. All right, now to the measures themselves. So the way I've organized this is through the different policy focus areas following the structure of the cap. So first, we have increasing carbon sequestration in the urban forest and the county's natural and working landscape. We have a substantial amount of open space in the unincorporated county. It's to our benefit to include some of these measures. So first, GHG1, the carbon farming program. This is really about modifying certain approaches to agriculture to improve the carbon sequestration or capacity of certain working lands. GHG2 is simply planting more trees, and particularly the urban forest, by 2030 and 2045. I want to mention here, the county has long had a very beneficial relationship and partnership with the Sacramento Tree Foundation as one entity that we've partnered with over the years to plant trees. They do a lot of great work, not just in outlying areas, but also in disadvantaged communities. Their Neighborhoods Program is one that we look to as potential partnership in the future as well. GSG15 also fits into this policy area, and it's not simply ongoing implementation of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. It is realizing the carbon sequestration potential of those lands that are preserved under the South SAC HCP. I do want to pause on this slide just to give you an understanding of what these icons mean on the bottom of the slide. These are throughout the Climate Action Plan. Each measure has one or more of these icons that represent what we call co-benefits. So for example, the equity benefit on the far-right bottom of the slide, that speaks to, at least in relationship to, the urban forest effort. We know that disadvantaged communities are the most impacted by climate change, whether that's extreme temperatures, or older homes or buildings that need additional energy conservation measures. In this slide, the example is the urban forest. Adding additional urban forestry in disadvantaged communities can help in a way of offsetting the urban heat island effect. It can help reduce energy use in some of these buildings. That's just an example of some of these co-benefits that we're talking about throughout the cap.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So on the slide, let me get the slide back up on my screen here. So on the slide, we're under GHG2, and the reference to tree planting as a means to sequester carbon. Are we, Todd, in the plan, making any assumptions or alluding to future inventories of net additional tree plantings that are very intentional in terms of existing urban, suburban areas, but also accounting for the fact that even in new growth areas where you would have additional housing, you might have additional, even industrial, growth, that landscape plans, mitigation measures that come with those associated CEQA documents for those new growth areas, would prescribe the planting of trees and other plant life so that even as we continue to grow, we're also keeping front of mind the importance of making sure that we have an intent to, in some cases, require the planting of trees in those areas?
Short answer to the question is yes. The measure itself strictly calls for that numeric goal, 15,000 by 2030. That is not necessarily limited to any specific geography, other than to say that through implementation of the county's environmental justice element, prioritization of county plantings should occur in environmental justice areas. Certainly, new growth, whether that's infill growth or in other areas of the county, older specific plans that are building out, the county's development standards certainly require planting of new trees, regardless of where this is. For example, parking lot shade in non-residential areas, all of that counts toward this goal.
And I would also assume that it includes those lands that the county has very direct control over, namely, regional parks?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize, didn't want to interrupt again so soon, but since Supervisor Serna broke the cellophane, I figured it was okay. Question under GHG1, on the, since we're talking about carbon farming, you know, we talk about farming practices and we talk about planting trees, but I know on the, at least one of the delta boards that I sit on, big projects that they're pursuing is conversion to rice farming and/or restoration of tidal marshes in order to achieve carbon sequestration. Is that contemplated in this measure? I didn't see it expressly called out, but I assume it would fall under GHG1 as just another kind of adaptive farming?
It certainly could. We try not to be so specific in all the different variations of different farming practices, but really the goal is the sequestration in those landscapes, whether that's active agriculture, certain types of crops that may be more adapted to, in certain climate zones, certain compost application, for example, but even conversion to other working landscapes, not conversion from ag land to something else, but certainly that's included in the general thought process.
And with the quantifiable effect of these conversions or practices, is that something that would be tracked in a cumulative fashion towards meeting our goals?
That's the goal of the measure, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to keep going. Second policy focus area is related to energy. So as you all probably are aware, as we were doing this revision, there was this case, California Restaurant Association v. Berkeley. That caused a lot of jurisdictions, not just Sacramento County, to have to pivot. We can no longer prohibit natural gas usage because of that case. And so these measures, GHG3, 4, and 5, are really about partnering with SMUD and GHG3 to implement their very ambitious 2030 Carbon Zero Plan. This is more than just words on paper. This is the county committing to installation of things like solar photovoltaic and battery storage at county facilities, making amendments to our zoning code to streamline some of the permitting aspects of those projects, whether those are privately initiated or through the county, to include a certain permitting pathway. I do know that the county has a lot of potential space, and I know our sustainability manager has been having some of those conversations internally with respect to certain county facilities. GSG4 and 5 are external-facing, meaning looking at the existing building stock of the county and how we can incentivize certain energy efficiency upgrades and even electrification. Again, incentivize, not mandate there. GSG5 is for new development, a similar approach. Both of these are reach codes and performance standards that require subsequent steps, so cost-effectiveness studies, obviously a lot more outreach with interested stakeholders, whether those include the BIA, Sacramento Association Realtors, other key players in that space, to make sure that what we do is cost-effective and actually legally enforceable.
Supervisor Desmond.
Todd, thank you, I appreciate this. I am very interested, obviously, in this aspect of the cap in terms of the impact on our ability to get new housing, and that's obviously a huge priority for us. With the cost-effectiveness, what will be the benchmark to determine if something is cost-effective? I mean...
Good question.
Not a rhetorical question. I really don't, it seems like kind of a squishy term.
Right, so the statewide reach codes team is working on currently updating cost-effectiveness analyses. I may want to ask our consultants to help out on this one, as I am not personally the expert, but generally, as I understand it, cost-effectiveness has to show what the initial investment is, the cost of going to, say, all-electric, if that's what's desired, to meet the goal, and what the payback time is. What's the return on that investment over a certain number of years? And perhaps I can defer to Andrew Beecher with a sent answer more detailed.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Todd, and thank you for your question, Supervisor Desmond. So with respect to the cost-effectiveness, that is looking at a comparison of a reach code. So when we're talking about a reach code, we're saying we're reaching beyond the minimum standards of the building code. In this case, you know, 2025 code is coming up, right? But at this point, only the 2022 code was looked at for the Climate Action Plan, because we just didn't know enough about the 2025 code at the time. So when we're talking about a reach code, we're talking about what measures or performance standards beyond the code minimum for specific building types would reach the, would equate to the same cost, basically looking at the construction cost and the on-bill costs. There's different metrics for looking at those that the local energy codes team prescribes. There's very detailed studies that we can share that they have published. But basically, making sure that the construction cost isn't offset, or is offset by on-bill savings, is really the metric that they're looking at.
Okay, but bottom line, there is, there will be statewide guidance on determining what is cost-effective. This won't be something where we're an outlier.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, and just to clarify, there is statewide guidance, but also looking at the specific building stock in Sacramento County is also important, because, you know, age of buildings, different building stock types, different climate zones, that all is important to look at.
No, I understand. There always will be local factors we have to take into account, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to add a bit more on the implementation side of this, the cap itself does not set a cost threshold, because some of those nuances aren't quite nailed down as it relates to the local, for example, the building stock and the different price points, et cetera. What we're trying to do here in these measures is set the policy goal through, you know, GSG5 in particular has a certain metric. We have to work through the cost-effectiveness studies and do all the outreach and come back before you with what those studies show and get your input as to what an appropriate cost-effectiveness threshold might be based on that locally available data.
Okay, great. So we will be visiting that again, and we'll have a, be able to have an opportunity to have a discussion about what the appropriate cost threshold would be. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
Does the cost-effectiveness take into account the life, essential life of the equipment, and how financing might be impacted by that? In other words, if you get a 30-year loan, but the equipment is only good for 10 years, and the loan's not paid off, then you have to buy new equipment, or replace something, or replace a battery, where you have financed something that's dead?
Sure, understanding question, thank you. So, yes, to, you know, be short about it, they do consider the life cycle of specific pieces of equipment. You know, obviously, the cases for what they're looking at for cost-effectiveness are different. You know, if we're talking about existing buildings, it's one set of analysis. If we're talking about new buildings, it's a different set of analysis that have different parameters that they look at. But to our understanding, yes, they do look at the life cycle of products, upfront costs, financing costs, and all of those in consideration.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move on to the next policy focus area, which is equipment, small equipment, large equipment, et cetera. So GSG6 is about incentivizing a transition into electric landscaping equipment, whether that's on the residential scale or the commercial scale. We're seeing a lot more opportunities for this type of equipment, not just in Sacramento County, but in California as a whole. GSG16 is encouraging zero-emission construction and ag equipment. This is mainly incentive-based. Obviously, folks who, you know, invest quite a bit in ag equipment don't expect to have to replace it very quickly, so we're trying to be sensitive to that. It also calls for some equipment types to be zero-emission or electric after 2035, trying to align with the state's goal there as well. On the transportation side of this, we're talking about EV charging infrastructure with the state's aggressive goals toward a transition to electric vehicles over time, or zero-emission vehicles, making sure that we have the necessary infrastructure in place, whether that's in public places, in homes, or in multifamily locations, to ensure that those policies can achieve and ensure success of the widespread adoption of those vehicles. So the metrics are there. On this measure, 24,000 by 2030, we're looking at ramping up that and encouraging that, obviously, very aggressively. Moving to the next focus area, vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. GSG8, 9, 11, and 12 all speak to this. Measure GSG8 is creating a VMT impact fee program. We feel this is important because the county is a large geographic area, as we all know, and trying to meet the state's goal of 15% below the regional average is difficult to do in a large geographic area. And so we see a need for projects that, through their individual analyses, may not be able to achieve that with onsite measures, meaning on the site of the project. We're trying to figure out a way to set up a on the site of the project. We're trying to figure out a way to set up a mitigation program such that after projects have demonstrated how they're meeting all their feasible onsite VMT reductions, how we can set up a program that they can pay in a fee, and that's obviously developed through a NEXA study that would target VMT reduction activities in close proximity to the project location.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Just, this is more an editorial comment than anything else, but we had a, I thought, was a good conversation about a week and a half ago at the, our monthly Air District meeting about VMT, the implementation of SB 375, and what, you know, what VMT means today versus when the statute was first signed into law, and given the fact that in the interim, the market share for zero-emission vehicles has expanded, thankfully. But at some point, the fact of the matter will be that with enough market share being zero emission, using vehicle miles traveled as a kind of a surrogate for carbon emissions isn't going to be accurate at all. And so I think we just need to keep, at least at the back of our minds here, the fact that if we're going to start contemplating fee programs that are associated with VMT, that that's going to be somewhat of a fluid marker. So again, just a comment, not suggesting we do anything differently now, given what you're asking us to do today, but I think it is important for us to note that because it's somewhat unique in terms of how we've taken that particular aspect of determining impact. But, you know, that impact almost by design because of our intent as a state to lower carbon emissions in the transportation sector with the expansion of EVs is so aggressive that at some point, we're going to have to, you know, figure out how to grapple with it.
I know you said that was an editorial comment, but I am going to come back to it in a later slide. All right. Oh, I didn't finish this one. So GHG9, I apologize for the alphabet soup on this one. TSMP, Transportation Systems Management Plan. This is already embodied in our zoning code. It is for non-residential projects. This is simply pointing to an update to the zoning code to clarify the certain types of projects that might be subject to this and how they can demonstrate over time achieving those VMT reductions. GHG11 is obviously partnering with SACRT as our, the biggest transit provider in the Sacramento area, to increase ridership, whether that's through certain activities we can have a lot more influence over through land use control as the county, or encouraging riderships through joining TMAs or something of that nature. And of course, it's not limited to SACRT. I know our county Department of Transportation has other smaller, more focused transit programs. GHG12, the board adopted the Active Transportation Plan in the last year or two. This is, this measure is calling for implementation of those priority projects in the ATP, obviously with an eye towards implementation in our environmental justice communities, to emphasize that again as a policy goal of the environmental justice element. All right. So moving to the land use side of this, this policy, or, excuse me, this cap measure, GHG10 and 13 are all about increasing infill development opportunities. I will note GHG13, the board has already adopted the updated infill program and, which speaks to development of policies, development codes that support infill and then that create and administer incentives to help encourage that type of high-quality infill development that we want to see in the county. I'm not going to say that's check the box and done. Obviously, a lot of work needs to go into that implementation. But GHG10, though, speaks to how we can make some modifications in our zoning code, reducing the minimum parking standards, you know, encouraging shared parking. That's something we hear a lot about in terms of different financing aspects of projects. Parking can be a challenge. I want to note on this slide a tremendous opportunity we have in the South Sacramento community that may or may not be readily apparent at the corner of Stockton Boulevard and Florin Road. Great infill opportunity site we have in one of our environmental justice communities. Moving on to minimizing waste and recovering materials from the waste stream. Our waste management folks are doing a good job here, as well as our county regional parks in implementation of SB 1383. These pictures are directly from things that the county is doing already. So we've got the three bin waste stream. We've got compost giveaways going on. All of these are early implementation activities, which is great to see. Moving now to the government operations measures. I want to start this by saying these six measures, by quantity, don't appear to be a lot, but what we're doing in the government operation measures is showing what the county is committing to do for its own facilities and its own fleet, the same as we are for those community measures. So, for example, Measure Gov. 1, trying to reduce county employee VMT. So looking at our employee transportation program, which is a good benefit right now, reducing our employee commute VMT through, for example, the transportation subsidy program that we already have, making sure people are aware of it, joining the Transportation Management Association. You've seen, maybe you've seen a lot of the outreach happening in recent months. Decarbonizing the county's transportation infrastructure, our general services folks are on board with this already, doing the fleet conversion program in Gov. 02 to transition to the zero-emission vehicles. I'm going to make a special note here about government. Measure Gov. 3, we did call out airport fleets a little differently here, simply because they're a different regulatory environment. They have different space out at International Airport, for example. They also have different funding constraints and funding streams. And so working closely with Bree Taylor at county airports, as well as Cindy Nichol, made sure that this measure was consistent with some of those constraints and those funding opportunities.
Why did you specifically call out International Airport and Executive and not Mather?
No particular reason in my remarks.
No, it's in the plan.
Oh, I don't have a good answer for that.
Okay. I guess that was a good question, then.
It was.
Thank you.
Moving on to the county buildings, Gov. 04, excuse me, Gov. 04, yeah, reducing natural gas. Again, this is not a mandate, but it's something we can impose on ourselves, reducing natural gas usage by 85% in our buildings, developing a decarb plan. Obviously, there's some potential technological constraints there, but at least trying to get there on a bit-by-bit basis, getting us on the right path. GHG3, I mentioned earlier, this is, also falls into the county facilities bucket, if you will, really pointing at how the county can use its own facilities to demonstrate adoption of those renewable energy projects or programs on county facilities. The last two are just about water efficiency, simply reducing water consumption in the county buildings, facilities, et cetera, and then increasing energy-efficient lighting systems. Our county Department of Transportation has been actively doing this for a number of years. I think there's about 2,200 streetlights, at least managed by the county, that are remaining. The goal is to get those all done by 2030 and then transition all of the county-managed outdoor lighting to the same by 2045. Any questions on that one?
Mr.? Actually, I do have a question about it as it relates to the street lighting. Do we know, Todd, whether or not, or do we, do we have a map of where those 22 outstanding potential retrofits lie, what communities, what neighborhoods? And have we taken the time to overlay that with CDBG-eligible neighborhoods? Because I know, at least in parts of the district I represent in the South, and I believe Supervisor Kennedy has done this as well, and maybe others on the dais that have done this too, but looking at the use of CDBG funds to help pay for the conversions, because obviously that's going to have the additional benefit of addressing the equity portion of the plan.
Good question. I do not have that map readily available, but I can ask our folks in DOT to produce such a map.
Because we go through the CDBG exercise annually, I think it would be helpful, moving forward, for all districts to be able to kind of look through those layers and treat that as an option in terms of the limited federal funds that we receive or have available to appropriate each year in those economically disenfranchised communities.
It becomes a strategic and prioritization conversation, for sure.
Good.
All right. So moving on from the greenhouse gas reduction side of the cap, moving into the adaptation and resiliency strategy, this is Chapter 3. So this is all based on a vulnerability assessment that was done in the last 10 years or so, identifying those areas of the county that may be vulnerable to the effects of increasing climate change. So think about increased heat, potential for drought, flooding, et cetera. This chapter includes 41 different measures, adaptation measures that really help the county and the residents of the county prepare for the effects of climate change: temperature, extreme heat, wildfire risk, drought, flooding, sea level rise. Obviously, sea level rise is a smaller portion of the county, down in the Delta primarily, but it's important to note for those communities that we serve. I do want to note on this slide, many of these adaptation measures also have the potential to reduce GHG emissions and improve public health, and all those other co-benefits that we talk about. We have not quantified that, but we do see that potential. Moving on to probably one of the biggest changes in the cap here, the Implementation Monitoring Reporting Strategy. This is Chapter 4, and this is where we got a lot of comments in 2022. So this chapter has grown quite a bit, and really what it has is the what, the who, the how, the when, all on the implementation side. So what's the implementation mechanism? Who's the lead at the county, the lead department or supporting department? How are we going to do this? Is it through public engagement, through community partnerships? The when, I mentioned earlier, the start and the end dates, the interconnectivity of that, all those dependencies, and then finally the cost and funding analysis. On the monitoring reporting side, we've got the ability to report on an annual basis, the status of each measure, what the key performance indicators are, the KPIs, so that we can monitor performance over time. Chapter 4 also commits the county to annual greenhouse gas inventory updates, and as close as, it's not actually real-time, but it's as pretty, as most frequent as you're likely to get the available data, to be able to report how well we're doing on meeting these goals. All of this would be put up on our public-facing web portal, the Sustainability Dashboard, which, again, kudos to John Lundgren for getting that work done. It's already live. It will be updated upon adoption of the cap. It would also be, all this information will be presented to you, the board, on at least an annual basis, as well as to any interested parties and members of the public. And this is where I want to come back to Supervisor Serna's comment about, you know, the changing technology, perhaps changing legislation over time. We've built in this concept of minor updates and major updates so that we can adapt without going through this comprehensive update process every single time, because it takes a while. So as we see changes in technology, as we see the evolution of legislation coming from the state, we want to be able to implement some of those things more nimbly without coming back all the way to the board, which I recognize may be disconcerting to some. But as long as we can demonstrate how those changes are meeting the intended goal of greenhouse gas reductions, we think it's appropriate to do that.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So I certainly appreciate and understand the need to balance making sure that we make, make certain this is a living document, right?
Correct.
And at the same time, not make it so process-heavy that we would face having to come to the board every time, you know, we want to make a, maybe even a subtle change here to future, through future updates. But I think more importantly, if some of this would rightfully be staff-driven and perhaps even approved in terms of some of those subtle changes, that shouldn't necessarily be construed to mean that there wouldn't be some opportunity for the public to have some, some place to review what is being considered by staff, proposed by staff. So I just didn't want that statement to go without a little bit more explanation that it by no means should be interpreted that it's an attempt to, you know, keep, keep the public from their continued participation in those future updates.
I think that's a very important point. We are certainly not saying we're going to go do this in the dark. We know we have a very robust list of stakeholders who are interested in ongoing success here. It's our intent to make sure those folks are aware of any changes that we anticipate or might propose through the minor or major update process. And certainly, if something grows legs larger than we thought it would, we could always raise it back to the board.
I assume that the, that staff intend to continue to curate the 14,000-plus subscribers, in other words?
That is correct.
Okay, good.
And we have direct contact with a number of them.
Good.
And if I may also, Dave DeFanti, Deputy County Executive, we also have your Climate Emergency Task Force, who are obviously experts in many fields, but come together to talk about these issues. That's another body or mechanism we could use for that outreach and discussion.
Good point. Thank you, Dave.
And the last point I want to make on this slide is that lower-right bullet. Chapter 4 calls for, by 2030, a comprehensive cap update, kind of envisioning, you know, potential changes at the state level. We're a couple of years away from a new scoping plan update, but linking that concurrently with a general plan update. As you are probably aware, we heard a number of comments related to the county's overarching land use control, land use authority, which really, we did not try to tackle via the cap, because the cap is, from our perspective, implementing the existing general plan. Our intent, then, in this 2030 update, is to link the climate-related policies of the county with the general plan policies and make sure that they're all in alignment, which is not to say that they're not in alignment now, because we do believe this cap is consistent with the current general plan, but making sure we have the, the right venue for that conversation to link the climate and land use discussion. This slide is just a quick graphic of that sustainability dashboard. If someone were to go on there right now, which they certainly can, they would see these graphics, the community-wide measures and the county operations measures, and they can click that, I can't click it with my fingers, but the View GHG Measures button, and they would see this green, yellow, red for each one of those measures. Green, obviously, meaning something's in progress. Some of those target indicators have already been achieved. Yellow means we've started it. Red means it's not started. And that doesn't mean that it's not a priority, but there are some hierarchies and some early measures that are obviously much more important. So I want to make sure people knew that that was already live, and it will be updated again upon adoption. All right. So moving on to the SEQA part of this cap, our intent all along has been for the cap to serve as what's called a qualified greenhouse gas reduction plan that is allowed to be used for programmatic tiering per the SEQA guidelines. And we do have a cap consistently checklist, consistency checklist, excuse me, that's included in the cap. That is required for subsequent projects, development projects, to demonstrate how they are actually carrying out the measures, applicable measures for their individual projects. And so we would see that being implemented on a per-project basis. A project comes in, they fill out the checklist, demonstrate what they're implementing as part of their project. If projects choose to do that, they can get relief from the SEQA greenhouse gas analysis portion of their project, meaning they no longer have to analyze their individual project greenhouse gas. project greenhouse gas impacts if they demonstrate they're implementing certain greenhouse gas reduction measures. I will say, this is one of the perhaps often understood points of SEQA streamlining for the cap. All this does is, I don't want to undersell it, but it reduces that piece of a SEQA analysis, the climate change, the greenhouse gas analysis piece of any individual project. So when we hear comments about the cap streamlining new growth, this is all that it does. It does not issue any land use entitlements. It does not give projects a pass on all of the other required components of a SEQA analysis. It is simply, if a project chooses to use this, it allows them to demonstrate which of the measures at a programmatic level in the cap they're implementing on a per-project basis, and they get relief from that specific topic in their environmental analysis. All right. We did do a subsequent EIR for the cap. This is one of the other big comments we got in 2022. We published the NOP in December of last year. We held the EIR scoping meeting in early January, mid-January of this year. We did publish the focused EIR in July of this year. And really, this tiered the analysis from the general plan EIR, because as I mentioned, you know, the general plan EIR was the requirement for doing the cap. And this EIR evaluated whether the cap itself, implementation of the cap, would result in new or substantially more severe significant impacts than those implemented or identified in the 2030 general plan EIR. And that's an important distinction because we're not evaluating all the individual projects, development projects that are, you know, in process or have been approved. We are simply evaluating the impacts of the cap. We did include alternatives analysis, seven different alternatives, and most of these were born out of feedback from prior comments or suggestions made during the public scoping meeting. So we included a couple of different smart growth alternative. One of those was very similar to the general plan update EIR, Alternative Three, which was focusing on mixed use. We included the VMT efficient alternative, a couple of these, numbers three and four, prohibition on further growth in the unincorporated county, prohibition on general plan land use diagram amendments. We also looked at community-wide carbon neutrality as well as carbon neutral new growth. And then obviously, they've required no project alternative. I will say, we, after the public review period, we did develop responses to comments. All of those were, those responses were included in the final EIR, which was published on October 25th. Some of those comments actually resulted in changes or revisions to the Climate Action Plan. A summary of those revisions is included in Table A2 of the cap. As it relates to the alternatives analysis, SEQA requires certain screening criteria. So apologize for the little bit of wonkiness here, but when we're looking at screening criteria for alternatives, we have to make sure that an alternative is meeting the basic project objectives. It has to be potentially feasible, and it has to be, implementation of an alternative must not be remote or speculative. And that's important because when we looked at a number of these alternatives that were suggested, a number of them, as you can see on the slide, screened out because of their failure to meet the screening criteria. Ultimately, the EIR concluded that the carbon neutral new growth is the environmentally superior alternative, and that is what staff is recommending to the board. I would, two more slides. Apologize for my long-winded presentation here. We do believe the cap, as I've said earlier, is consistent with the general plan. It is to complement the general plan and include additional greenhouse gas reduction measures and adaptation strategies. Staff's recommendation is that the cap is adopted as a policy plan that supports the general plan. It is, from our perspective, supporting the county's existing growth management strategy in the general plan, as well as the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. And I said this earlier, but a comprehensive general plan update concurrent with a general, excuse me, a cap update would be able to explore, you know, potential new policies aimed at reducing so-called sprawl, protecting farmland and open space, and increasing infill development opportunity, thereby reducing VMT. So staff's recommendation is adopting Resolution One, certifying the final subsequent EIR as adequate and complete, adopting the SEQA findings of fact, statement of overriding considerations. And then secondly, adopting Resolution Two, which is amending the general plan to incorporate the cap as a policy plan, as well as amending general plan policy LU120, which is one of the new growth management policies to include the carbon neutral new growth performance standard. That is the end of my presentation. Before I go on to address any of the inaccurate emails, do you have any questions of me?
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I appreciate what you identified as a long-winded presentation. This is a big plan with far-reaching implications, and it should be vetted thoroughly. And I want to compliment you and particularly John Lundgren for the work you've put into developing this plan and producing such a professional and digestible document that lays out this framework that will guide development for the foreseeable future for the county. So I just want to drill down on some of the things that I heard you say and double-check in what I've read to make sure I'm reading it correctly. So first up on measure GHG five, this is the decarbonize new buildings. This reach code is, as it's been described, it mentions the 2025 update, I assume is a Title 24 update for California building codes, and that we will, is it, are we trying to align our plan with those codes? Are we making sure that those codes don't go further than our plan does? Explain to me what the synergy of those two documents are.
Sure. I'll start with what we had to use at the time when we developed these measures was the 2022 statewide codes. That's our baseline. And so this measure, GHG five, is looking at, obviously, 2022 building code and going above and beyond that. We know that there's obviously a 2025 update in the works. In order to meet the reduction potential that's identified in GHG five, we're going to see what comes out of the 2025 update and whether or not it meets this test. So there's the potential for it to. I don't know for certain whether it will yet, but we are definitely keeping an eye on it.
And so if I, again, just try to understand what you just said, does that mean then that if the 2025 code gets there, then we would no longer have a reach code because our goals would be accomplished through the statewide update?
That is a potential outcome.
And then will there be a situation wherein some codes, particularly between state and federal codes, that it defaults to whichever one is more restrictive? Is there any catch like that?
That could be an outcome also. It's kind of hard to say. I'm not sure whether I can predict the future on the state or federal code, but ultimately, what I'm concerned about for this cap is that we are meeting the GHG reduction potential identified here.
Okay, so let's drill down on that point for a quick second then. It says that residential single-family, that projects must meet the EDR one of 11.5, I think it is. And so that's not necessarily each individual building permit.
Correct.
That is the project as a whole.
Correct.
Reduces their energy consumption.
That is correct.
Okay.
Projects.
Okay. And then another question I had is, I think I heard you say that because of the result of the Berkeley case, our plan does not preclude the use of natural gas. It simply says that even if you use natural gas, you still have to meet the overall standards of the code.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, moving on, oh, one more thing that I did want to ask about was to Supervisor Desmond's question about the cost effectiveness. How does that get determined? Is that determined on a per-door basis? Is that determined on a development standard basis? I mean, what is the metric by which that would be measured? Do we know that?
I'm going to pitch that to our consultants.
Okay.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume and Todd. That is on a per-building basis. So if it's a multifamily building, you know, looking at that whole multifamily building, single-family, residential, looking at just that one building.
And do you have any idea, back of the napkin sketch, what would be deemed to be cost ineffective?
So, sorry. Yes. So based on what is currently in, recommended in the Climate Action Plan under GHG five, is this metric of EDR 11.5 or below. It's really looking at, you know, a metric below the code minimum that is considered cost-effective still. When you start exceeding that, you can get into territory where you start becoming not cost-effective. But the 11.5 is the, it is a threshold. There are, you can't go beyond that. But, you know, let's say doubling that efficiency standard could possibly be not cost-effective.
Okay. So I appreciate that answer relative to kind of the metric and the standard, but when I see the word cost, I think in terms of dollars and cents. And so do we have an idea for, say, a single-family home, how many dollars still makes sense?
The, sorry, the cost effectiveness is looking at the same cost when it comes out to the balancing the construction costs and on-bill costs of the code, the current code minimum. So the state has decided that this is the code, you know, whatever the cost is to build that, the reach code and the cost effectiveness of that reach code looks at that current standard as the benchmark.
So if I heard what you just said correctly, whatever standard we put into place cannot result in additional cost per door than what the state code requires in order for it to meet cost effectiveness?
There are various metrics that they look at in the cost effectiveness, time-dependent valuation, on-bill costs, construction costs, and how those all balance out. So I can't say definitively exactly, as you stated that, a yes. However, looking at, you know, looking at these various metrics, if digging into the documentation that the local energy codes team has produced.
If I may, if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're asking for whether or not the additional cost will exceed X thousand dollars, we don't have that information right now. But what Todd's committed to is, once we do that analysis, that we would come back to the board, because that is an important question, right? If it's, you know, a hundred bucks more, okay, that's one thing. If it's $50,000 a door, you know, that's a completely different thing, right? So unless I'm wrong, I don't believe we have that information right now. But what the state code says is that your savings has to exceed whatever that cost is. So you could see, you know, $1,000 in additional costs that results in $2,000 in savings, or $10,000 in costs that results in $20,000 savings. But, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. But we just haven't set a dollar threshold at this point as to what makes sense. We think that the analysis would need to bear that out and really a conversation with this board.
And when you say savings, what factors in that amount? Because these are greenhouse gas reduction standards, right? So you're not talking about savings on utilities, for example?
We are.
We are.
Yes, absolutely. Talking about savings on utility bills.
Right. So it's going to be very rare for somebody to have a $50,000 a year utility bill. You see where I'm driving with this?
Yeah.
But at what point then will we kind of have a better idea of what that figure might be, or what our tolerance level might be and what's still considered cost-effective?
Right. And to your point, I believe, again, correct me if I'm wrong, that it is over time. So it's not the first year of savings. It would be over a certain period of time, whether it be 20, 30 years, I'm not exactly sure. But it would be what upfront investment, what does that cost, and then how much savings on bill or otherwise would you see over a period of time?
Okay. And I apologize, I know I'm getting down in weeds on this, but I mean, when we hear people decry the lack of affordable housing, lowercase affordable, and we're putting, you know, potentially tens of thousands of dollars in added cost, that's a real-world implication.
Can I, can I just underscore that real quick, Mr. Chair? But just to be abundantly clear here, though, after you make that evaluation of cost effectiveness, you will be coming back to us.
Correct.
To approve whether the cost threshold, approving the methodology, and whether the cost threshold that you have identified as illustrating the cost effectiveness is, it would have to be approved by this board. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And if you're interested in looking at the details, measures, GHG five C and D are the steps that would include that. So five C talks about stakeholder outreach to present certain options. Obviously, we have to do the analysis first. Then we have to develop an ordinance based on the cost-effectiveness studies. And obviously, staff can't adopt an ordinance in and of itself. We would have to come to the board for that. So I would expect that to happen within the next roughly about a year. Obviously, we don't want to get ahead of where the state's going in the 2025 cycle. We want to make sure that if we're going to do a reach code, we get the most benefit of it in terms of GHG reduction. But ultimately, yes, we'll be coming back in front of the board for that conversation.
Okay. So then, now moving on to GHG 08. The plan says that this measure was not deemed quantifiable, and yet it calls for doing a nexus study to identify, you know, I guess, common benefit VMT projects that then would get spread across new development, and those new developments would pay impact fees in order to cover the cost of those projects. Am I kind of summarizing what the goal would be here? And so kind of the question that Supervisor Serna raised is, we heard at the Air District that even an electric vehicle might have air quality implications relative to brake dust, rubber tire particles, you know, whatever else. But from an emissions standpoint, I would think an electric vehicle, VMT is zero equals zero equals zero. And so I'm just, and I know I'm like way ahead of us, but, you know, I always like to peek around corners and think about what the unintended consequences are. And so how would we even begin to identify a VMT project for which we can develop a fee? And how soon would we envision that process happening so that we're implementing that fee in an equitable fashion across projects?
I'll start with an answer, and I know potentially Cameron Chu with County DOT might be able to provide some better insight on the technical aspects. But to your first point where we said the measure is deemed not quantifiable, that means we did not quantify the GHG reduction potential, just because it gets into a lot of modeling and certain specific factors that we weren't, didn't have available. Certainly, the electric vehicle point, or zero emission vehicle, doesn't have to be electric, would not have greenhouse gas emissions. And maybe building on Supervisor Serna's point, at some point, we have to account for that in whatever modeling assumptions go into that. And I don't know, Cameron, if you can speak to...
So before Cameron comes in and starts talking about actual literal examples, I just want to touch on something that you just said, is that if it's not quantifiable, meaning we don't even know what this is doing relative to GHG targets, how could we possibly justify charging an impact fee that would be passed on to whomever is buying into that project?
So what we're going to do in this measure is figure out a nexus study to see if it is quantifiable, because we didn't have enough information yet. But once we do that analysis, we will be able to see what are the metrics, what are the modeling inputs, what are the assumptions that can lead to establishing a fee for VMT?
Okay. So the concept in and of itself is not quantifiable. If you do X, you will receive Y. But the individual projects to accomplish the goals elucidated in this measure may be quantifiable, that we will be able to come back and gauge their effectiveness.
Correct. On certain projects, well, nearly all larger projects that have a VMT analysis, we do that modeling, or consultants do that modeling. And Cameron is very skilled and knowledgeable in that.
Okay.
Cameron Chu, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation. Yeah, as Todd mentioned, this VMT fee programs are kind of an evolving area of practice right now. It's kind of like a mitigation bank that's used in other areas of environmental, just like wetlands. So the idea is that we would come up with a basket of VMT-reducing projects, whether it's increased number of bike lanes, trails, improved transit amenities, road diet projects, any kind of capital project that could reduce VMT. And then, once you have that project list, you can identify those VMT reductions from the specific projects and come up with a cost per VMT reduction and develop a fee program based off of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, yes, Todd. I just wanted to express my thanks to you and to John and to all of our staff and our consulting team. It has taken quite a bit to get to this point this afternoon, and I know at times it's been extremely frustrating, and sometimes it's been a certain special interest group. extremely frustrating, and sometimes it's been certain special interest groups that have said, you know, hurry up and wait. Sometimes it's been us that have said that. And, you know, we've thrown, thrown you some curveballs in the interest of total, you know, disclosure. I think we started out wanting to be as aggressive as we possibly could in terms of some of our aspirations and horizon years. But I think it was all part of the growing pains that come with an exercise like this, to do a first of its kind, least for this county, climate action plan, to really kind of test the limits of what we think is both necessary to, to be assertive enough to address climate change, which, I mean, if you, if you try to contemplate it, it really is, you know, undoubtedly our greatest, you know, threat that, that looms large, that is not just very local, but extremely global by definition. So thanks for putting up with me and, and to some extent with us, and to, and for being so flexible and understanding at times. And I think assuming that we do get to a point where we do adopt this, hopefully today, speaking for myself, I think you should all be proud of the work that you've done and the fact that you, you've been as receptive to the need to, to be flexible as you have. And, you know, I'd say the same thing to, to members of the public that have walked lockstep with our staff and with us over not months, but years now to get this, to this point. And so before we hear from the public, I just wanted to make sure that you understood from the supervisor how much I do appreciate all of that, because it's not a typical planning exercise, it's not a general plan update, it's not a specific plan. And this was just a kind of something that we all kind of had to collectively go through together, not knowing where some of the pitfalls were going to be and some of the opportunities as well. So again, thanks to the entire team.
I'll piggyback on that and just say, you know, to, to some who thought that this took too long, you know, the end product speaks for itself, I believe, and is far better than what we had first seen, particularly Chapter 4, which I think is much more robust and actually has, you know, some quantifiable measures that will be taken to see to it that this is not just a plan, but something that becomes reality. So I thank you for that, too.
Thank you for your remarks. I will say, before I sit down, I did want to cover some of those points that you may have received in the numerous emails on this matter, just very briefly, hopefully. And this is, I'll say, not unusual. There's been a number of times where we, we have seen inaccurate information promulgated by a number of groups. We have put together frequently asked questions on our website to help dispel some of that misinformation. But I did want to speak to seven of the points that were raised. The one, the first one is the, the assertion that the cap is not an enforceable regulatory document. The cap doesn't actually say that. Those words are not used in the cap. The Climate Action Plan is a plan. It is enforceable as general plan policy upon adoption. It includes all the measures and the actions that I have outlined and are obviously readily available and readable. Page 2-17 of the cap explains how those measures and supporting actions are, quote, "real", "actionable, feasible, and enforceable." And what that means, those words are very important because they meet the requirements of SEQUA Guidelines, Section 1518 3.5, as well as, sorry, that, that section refers to the qualified cap that I mentioned earlier. It also meets the requirements of the General Plan EIR mitigation measure CC2. The second point that's been made is the claim that the cap measures are not subject to SEQUA's mitigation standard. Again, the cap doesn't say this, but generally, cap measures are not individually SEQUA mitigation. And remember, in the slide that I went through showing the, the EIR analysis, what we're evaluating is the impacts of the cap, not the impacts of all these individual projects or the, the general plan EIR. The general plan EIR is done and finished in 2011, was not challenged. We're not trying to rehash that old information. Obviously, the cap fulfills that mitigation from the general plan EIR. I would also note, there is no precedent for all individual measures in a plan like the cap to achieve SEQUA mitigation standards. We also addressed that response, or that assertion in response, responses to comments on the final EIR, page 10-37, as well as pointing back to the SEQUA guidelines, which specify the, the use of specific performance standards for a cap. Number three, there's a statement made that the cap fails to acknowledge that while the cap is not a land use plan, it has a land use nexus, and that the cap doesn't consider land use related measures to reduce GHG emissions. As you heard in my presentation, I talked about the infill component of the cap, the VMT reduction, notwithstanding the EV adoption rate, et cetera. Obviously, the cap does have land use implications, and we've tried to bridge the gap between, or maybe not even the gap, make the connection between climate reduction or climate action, greenhouse gas reduction, the measures specifically as it relates to the county's existing general plan construct. The cap includes those measures specifically because of the aggressive action that the board has set in the climate emergency declaration to, and we've also had the policy discussion about accelerating infill development and, and project characteristics that support lower VMT. The cap, and I'll say this until I'm not saying this anymore, it is not a land use plan. The general plan is the county's blueprint for growth in the unincorporated area. Number four, there's this statement that the county has failed to respond substantively to most of 350 Sacramento's detailed comments on the cap and the EIR. That is patently false. The EIR, the final EIR includes 54 pages of responses to those comments. Those pages are 1033 to 1087 in the response to comments chapter. We have provided detailed responses to each of those individual comments as required by the SEQUA guidelines. We have also provided responses to comments on the cap and incorporated some changes to the cap based on the comments received specifically by 350 Sacramento. Number five, the statement is that the county is failing to appropriately consider a project alternative that prioritizes new growth in infill and already approved projects per the general plan. The general plan, I've said this before, the general plan already prioritizes infill. General plan policy LU3 speaks to the county prioritizing infill. We've had policy discussions this spring, not only this spring, but as recently as this spring at the board, where you have clearly provided that direction to staff to provide much more streamlined processes for infill development. We are implementing that. I mentioned GHG 13, the infill development, that, that action has already been adopted by the board. The EIR included analysis of two smart growth alternatives. These alternatives were rejected as infeasible, and we've already responded to that comment as well in response to comments. I would say the scope of the cap is not to solve all the land use ills of the county. The scope of the cap is strictly to obviously reduce greenhouse gas emissions and provide for adaptation measures, but also to fulfill the general plan policy and the mitigation measure in the general plan EIR. Number six, the statement that the county is failing to acknowledge the effect of the county's, quote, "enormous" over supply of existing development approvals on the ability of projects, new projects to build out completely and quickly as claimed, et cetera. The response here, we have based our modeling in the cap on overall projections of growth in the unincorporated county through 2045. We have included several projects at the request of 350 Sacramento in our growth projections, whereas now they're telling us, why did you include all that? We did it because they asked us to. What that means from a modeling perspective is that we have a, a very conservative set of assumptions from a land use forecast for 2030 and 2045 with those projects included. What that means for the cap, the cap's ability to demonstrate how the county is meeting its goals, it makes it harder for us. But we did it because they asked us to. There are no reduction benefits that are claimed for full buildout of these individual projects or partial buildout, et cetera. The cap does not consider the effects of phasing. That's not the cap's goal. The cap's goal is strictly to look at the, I'll call it the gross emissions, if you will, and figure out how to reduce them. Again, the cap is not trying to solve the analysis for individual projects. I would articulate, if we use that same logic of slower buildout over time of certain projects, we would not have those emissions to deal with. Therefore, we would not need certain greenhouse gas emissions reduction measures. Finally, the, the, the statement that the cap is presenting inflated growth projections and would, those growth projections would show quicker buildout and be carbon neutral, et cetera. I've already said that we included all those growth projections because we were asked to do so. The VMT assumptions in the cap are based on the buildout of the 2030 general plan, as well as all those reasonably foreseeable projects that we, again, were requested to include. We also do not assume reductions in VMT for project specific commitments or mitigation that would reduce VMT or otherwise achieve carbon neutrality. That is simply, we are not taking, taking credit in the cap for individual project performance goals. We have assumed those growth projects to increase countywide VMT. We have not assumed them to be carbon neutral. Despite staff's recommendation for carbon neutral new growth, our modeling has not included that assumption. Finally, and I briefly alluded to this earlier, the cap is not presupposing or intending to convey land use approvals for any new project. It is simply a set of assumptions as it relates to new growth or new development projects through which we build our forecasts and then establish certain greenhouse gas production measures to achieve the legislative required targets for SB 32 and AB 1279. The cap is not weak. I will say, it includes very enforceable measures, as I've articulated, and in actions that in some cases exceed the industry standards. And we've done that because of the direction of this board to go be aggressive as possible. And I will stop talking because you have probably a number of public comments.
Thank you, Todd. Supervisor Frost?
Todd, does the cap, when we go to update the 2030 general plan, I think we were on schedule to begin that effort over the next few years, does the cap get updated along with the plan?
Yes.
Does it align with it?
So we have said in Chapter 4, the, the concept of doing a comprehensive cap update concurrently with the general plan update.
All right, thank you very much. Public comment?
Okay, our first speaker is Erin Teague. Pull them down. I usually have a pretty loud voice, so. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and Supervisors. Erin Teague, on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors. First, I'd like to thank staff who have taken the time not only to inform and educate our own members, but they've also included them as stakeholders throughout this process. Our comments today focus on GHG 4 as it relates to the residential built environment. We acknowledge the urgent need for jurisdictions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and understand the interest in retrofitting existing buildings, buildings and advancing decarbonization. However, it's essential, as we go through these processes, to consider that as the actions laid out in the cap are implemented, that there will be financial implications for homeowners and ultimately all of the housing stock in Sacramento County. Sacramento County residents should not face excessive burdens from climate change policies that may jeopardize their ability to afford their current housing or future homeownership. As local experts in housing, we hope that we can remain involved as partners so that we can provide real examples and effects on homeowners as cost studies and trigger mechanisms are created. We cannot stress enough that every part of the process for homeowners to electrification needs to be a user-friendly process. This means regulations, timing, access to information, and the permitting process. It needs to provide logical steps that make sense as homeowners, as they work through the electrification retrofit process, say that 10 times fast, to create more efficient homes so that they do not work outside the permit process. We support a mechanism to support low income and environmental justice communities to cover expenses with, that are incurred with time of replacement and emergency replacement electric options. But we want to highlight that any type of loan process always takes time, and this would further delay emergency replacements. Additionally, the structure to qualify could also still impede homeowners from qualifying for certain loans. In reality, a loan program would need to operate as a preemptive option to help homeowners before their systems are failing. My last point is my membership understands that the implementation of the Climate Action Plan will not happen overnight, and there will need to be a massive education component for residents, and we are ready to do our part to educate our membership so that they can turn to work with their clients that are buying, selling, and consulting on major home projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erin. Chris Norm.
Chris Norm, North State Building Industry Association. Thank you for all the work on this. We understand that housing is certainly part of the solution to the global climate change issues and challenges that we're talking about here. The cap is very well thought out, there's a lot of great ideas in there, it's very comprehensive, and I just wanted to thank Todd Smith, Dave, and John for all their hard work on this. We've worked closely together on this, on several iterations of this document over the last four or five years. And our goal really is just to make sure that we have a predictable, consistent document instead of standards and that the costs are reasonable, and that they just don't create a barrier to housing production. And I know that the board shares those goals and values. We're primarily interested in Measure 5, and there's been a robust discussion of that. So thank you, I think a number of the items have been clarified. I just wanted to state that I think that was said, but I want to clarify that the goal here really is to have this start in 2026, which would align with the state's code that's going to be, would be coming in, so that our industry wouldn't be trying to adopt two different sets of understandings of what the codes would be. I think that's what's going to happen, but I want to make sure that that's on the record as a concern, and we want to get that clarified. And then also that if the state ends up adopting a code that ends up being very, very close to what we're contemplating here, in terms of implementation, it would actually be very helpful if we were actually just to use the state code, because our builders were, would be working in multiple jurisdictions throughout the area and using that same code. We don't know what the state's going to do, but that would be our, our request, would be to have a uniform set of standards, depending on what the state does. And I think I just wanted to make sure it's clear that we're not prohibited from using natural gas. I think that's perfectly understood, but if we could say that on the record, I think that'd be helpful so we don't run into any problems in like two years. And then on the urban services boundary, I think that, you know, we are a little concerned about creating different various standards depending on where it is. I think that it would be probably more palatable if there was just an all-electric requirement or just if it was consistent with the 11.5 EDR 1 standard for those components. And I see my time is up, but so I do just want to close by saying thank you to all of you guys for all your diligent work on this, the interest in making sure that we have a collaborative process, and we're, look forward to continuing to participate with the county on achieving those goals. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Steve Johns.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Steve Johns with SMUD. SMUD is pleased to support the county's Climate Action Plan. We strongly support the county's efforts to reduce GHG emissions, including the planned support of SMUD's 2030 Zero Carbon Plan. Four years ago, SMUD's Board of Directors declared a climate emergency and called for SMUD to take aggressive action to become carbon neutral by 2030. SMUD to take aggressive action to become carbon neutral by 2030. And in 2021, our Board adopted our Zero Carbon Plan, which set a goal of zero carbon emissions in our power supply by 2030 while maintaining reliability, safety, affordable rates, and doing it with an eye towards equity for under-resourced communities. SMUD continues to make progress in achieving our 2030 plan goals. Moving more renewable energy resources into our portfolio with local projects, including solar and battery storage, we're also looking at additional regional and local solar, battery storage, wind, and geothermal projects to meet our goal. We're going to be bringing on more energy storage projects and looking at emerging technologies, including those that will help us retire and transition our thermal generation facilities. SMUD has a long history of partnering with Sacramento County and look forward to collaborating on climate-related matters, including building electrification, transportation electrification, and improving the energy efficiency of county operations. We look forward to continue to collaborate with the county on the CAP implementation and as we move forward, trying to achieve our 2030 goal. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve, and congratulations. Megan Shumway.
Hello, I'm Megan Shumway. I'm a retired nurse, and I work with several climate organizations, including Climate Action California and Sacramento Climate Coalition. I wanted to, I saw that Todd did a really great job of putting together that cap and that there was a mention of alternative fuels. And one of the alternative fuels I wanted to address is hydrogen. Right now, I don't know of a reliable source of clean hydrogen made by electrolysis, though there are lots of plans out there to reform methane, which is a fossil fuel, and using a lot of energy to make hydrogen. And a lot of people in Climate Action California think we'd be better off just burning the hydrogen in the first place if we wanted to go that route. So, hydrogen in a fuel cell does burn zero emissions, but where you get that hydrogen from is crucial, and I want you to keep that in mind when you're looking at projects or considering capital expenditures for the county in buying a, possibly buying a fuel cell car, like a hydrogen car. Thanks.
Thank you. Ralph Propper.
Yeah, hello, Board members. Actually, today I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club. So, the Sierra Club remains concerned with the currently proposed cap as follows. It lacks sufficient land use measures to curb greenhouse gas emissions effectively, particularly with ongoing greenfield development projects outside of the urban policy area and the urban services boundary. The CAP's projections for vehicle miles traveled and GHD emissions underestimate the impact of large-scale greenfield projects as these projects were not individually evaluated, leading to inaccuracies in emissions forecasts. The CAP does not align with the Air Resources Board's 22 scoping plan, which mandates a 22% reduction in VMT by 2045. The CAP only aims for a 5% reduction, which undermines the state's climate goals. The CAP failed to include the required fees for overseeing and maintaining the cap as required in the county's 2011 general plan update. Environmental Impact Report adopts instead for selective cost recovery agreements with developers. And last, the Sierra Club advocates for the adoption of a carbon-neutral alternative that mandates carbon-neutral outcomes for new developments beyond the urban policy area and the urban services boundary without reliance on non-local carbon offsets. There's no way to guarantee that carbon offsets outside the county will actually be enforced and followed and be realizable. We see, for example, a lot of forests that have burnt down since, just as one example. So, thank you for consideration of the Sierra Club comments.
Thank you, Ralph. Matt McDonald.
Matt McDonald with the California Department Association, representing over 3,000 members in Sacramento County. First, I'd like to echo CAA support for the comments you received from North State BIA. On the limitations proposed under mitigation Measure 5, CAA agrees with BIA in discouraging mandates that could create a competitive disadvantage for new housing builds. We would also like to call your attention to GHD-G7, A, B, and C related to the installation of EV charging stations at existing residential units. CAA recognizes the importance of expanding the use of EV charging stations at multifamily residences to encourage greater use of electric vehicles. In principle, we do not oppose the addition of EV charging in conjunction with construction permits for the addition of new parking or in the event of power supply increases. The details of a forthcoming ordinance will be key for the rental housing industry to make sure that the conditions that trigger the EV requirement do not become an unexpected cost burden for existing property owners. We ask that the county please include CAA in the community engagement on this prospect, on this process as it goes further, and we thank the Board and staff for its diligence on developing this plan for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Lou Slim.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here to speak to you on behalf of the Environmental Council of Sacramento. ECOS would like to thank the county for their work to develop an improved climate action plan, especially compared to the 2022 version. However, although the CAP is not a land use document, we do want to emphasize our concerns regarding the county's approval of several greenfield projects and the role that the CAP could play to streamline that. Approval of greenfield projects reduces the focus and likelihood for lower VMT infill projects to be developed. Unlike infill projects, which may need infrastructural improvements and demonstrate reduced GHD emissions, greenfield projects rely on compliance with the county's CAP to accomplish climate goals. Some of these CAP measures are still in development, and achievement of climate goals are not guaranteed. For example, SMUD acknowledges that achievement of its 2030 zero-carbon goal is not guaranteed but relies on unproved new technology. Additionally, for greenfield development projects, to achieve the goals of the CAP, an ordinance must be established for the VMT impact fee program for which the level of fees have not yet been determined. Carb scoping plan includes a 15% reduction in VMT. However, the CAP does not provide a path to achieve this requirement, and in our email submitted comments, we include some recommendations for a better approach to VMT mitigation and carbon offsets. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lou Slim. Carol Kinser.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Carol Kinser. I'm a retired cardiovascular nurse of 30 years and currently volunteer as a climate ambassador for the city of Elk Grove. And additionally, I sit on numerous climate action committees in and around the Sacramento community, including my faith community. I'm wearing black today in mourning of the outcome of our elections, as I am so worried about Mother Earth because we continue to ignore the impacts of human-caused climate change. I plead with you to not adopt your current climate action plan as it does not adequately stop urban sprawl, which continues our negative impact by leading to more air, water, soil pollution, and higher greenhouse gas emissions that further threatens our natural and rural environment, as well as our own personal health and, of course, our planet's health. The signs that our planet is in peril is right before us. Our incredibly long fire season, hottest days and years ever recorded for our planet, long droughts, and massive landslides by excessive rain on barren scorched land. We are already seeing the impact on public health. Rise in heat stroke deaths, rise in respiratory and cardiovascular disease, increase in autoimmune infectious vector diseases, and a rise in cancer rates. These poor health outcomes should be pushing us all to fight with urgency to create more green energy infrastructure for our community and build on more sustainable and equitable communities. I am frustrated that the CAP does not stop the push for urban sprawl, which will create larger homes and mega highways where people will continue to be further dependent on their cars and use more energy, where more carbon dioxide will be spewed as people have goods delivered to their homes from Amazon deliveries and running back and forth to grocery stores and to work. Please give me some hope for the future and revise your most current Sacramento County Climate Action Plan and take into account our public health and our planet's health. So, say no to this version of the current Climate Action Plan as we need a plan that prioritizes smart growth, more affordable housing in existing developed areas, and creates transit centers and more sustainable living. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Carol. Herman Barahona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Herman Barahona. I'm the founder and lead organizer of the Sacramento Environmental Justice Coalition, which at 350 Sacramento and many other partners have joined us to have this discussion about what's happening to our poorest in our neighborhoods. The California Public Health Services Department gives us a report that there are 645,000 people in this county that are on medical, and out of that, 50,112 people are homeless. These numbers come from a PRA request we also ask your local human services department. Our concern with this Climate Action Plan is we don't feel that they've been included or even considered at all in your climate adaptation and resilience process. Where are these people going to go? How are we going to provide the kind of shelter and resilience the very low-income people, especially the elderly and the disabled, are going to need in the next five to 20 years? This is our biggest concern, and this is why we oppose this cap, not because it's not great. I think it's made a lot of progress. We applaud the efforts of all people involved here, but we do need to have more consideration of low-income families that are part of our organization that haven't had a chance to contribute to this conversation, mainly because of the schedule in which these meetings are held. We have one of our board members from the Meadowview District who was denied membership to the Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force, and he's the only African-American who applied for this project. We want to be included in this, and this is one of the things that we are asking the Board to consider. We'd love to have an opportunity to provide input and to improve it as it develops for the next phase of 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Herman. Oscar Balaguer.
I'm Oscar Balaguer with 350 Sacramento. I appreciate Todd's very rapid response to 350's very recent comments. Different perspective. We believe the CAP suffers defects which should delay its adoption. You have our written comments, I think, and I'll hit five highlights. First, general plan policies LU 119 and 120 were not subject to subsequent review at the general plan update FEIR, and this implicates CAP assumptions and GHD projections. Two, the CAP cannot be a mere specified detail of previously deferred mitigation, as is claimed, because, among other reasons, it was not subject to GPU FEIR review. Three, the growth projections, which provide the basis for CAP GHD emissions, are wildly inconsistent with SECOG projections, the county historical growth rate, and the county's own assessments. Four, new sprawl projects cannot be built out completely by 2045, as is assumed, because the county will have adopted 190 years' worth of growth with these new projects, confounding the CAP's assumptions, excuse me, about GHD mitigation associated with full buildout. And fifth and final, the county has failed to adequately evaluate Alternative 1 mixed use, which would prioritize infill and buildout of approved development over new sprawl. Alternative 1 is strongly supported by the GPU FEIR, the general plan, and state policies and guidance. We urge you to remedy these problems before you adopt the CAP. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Oscar. Katie McCammon.
Hi, Program Director with 350 Sacramento, your favorite group. We appreciate all the work that's gone into developing the county cap. Obviously, there's so many great ideas in it, so much potential, but we just want to be careful that we're looking at something that's crucial to look at, which is sprawl development. Climate change is currently unmitigated. We have higher emissions than ever before in this country, everywhere. That's not a joke. That's affecting people's lives. That's killing people. It will continue to affect people's lives negatively and kill people. So, don't mess around with this. Take it seriously. If it takes time to develop something that opposes too much sprawl, that's a good thing. We want to do that because we want to protect our natural lands. That sequesters carbon. We also want to make sure we're not building a bunch of housing that people aren't actually asking for. People have been asking for housing near resources, near their jobs, near things they want to be around. They don't want to drive a half an hour to their house and to their job. So, incentivizing infill is awesome. That's great. Let's do that. But you have to be able to speak to sprawl. Sprawl development is a problem. It creates greenhouse gases. It creates VMT. That is an issue. I moved here to Sacramento for a few reasons. One big reason being that I thought the city was awesome, and you're doing great work. Like I said, there's a lot of potential here, but you have to be willing to talk about the issues clearly and be honest about it. And we are not mitigating climate change. We have to, to save lives. So, I encourage you all to be the leaders. We know you want to be and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Do we have any more public comment, Madam Clerk?
That concludes your public comments.
Okay. Supervisor Stern.
Thank you, Chair. So, I spoke after the conclusion of staff's report to, again, thank them all and our consultant team, and so I'll start here with my concluding remarks, doing the same. I also want to add to that certainly a thanks to all the members of the public that came this afternoon to provide testimony and certainly over the course of years now at various venues related to the development of the CAP, your contribution, as was alluded to in reference by Mr. Smith during his presentation, I think, has made the CAP stronger. And I know we've kind of approached this in fits and starts in terms of being asked to slow down and hurry up sometimes simultaneously, but I think it's really kind of a nature of the beast type of thing. You know, I think I would be remiss if I didn't address kind of what I consider to be one of the more unfortunate aspects of kind of this latest back and forth with, especially Sacramento 350 here. And that is, I just think, and I say this with all due respect, I think it's really disingenuous to look at the CAP simply as a tool to stop growth or to curb growth or to address a certain type of growth. I think it's much more important than that. This is a plan that we've not had before that is intended to address something much greater than kind of the pejorative term sprawl. It's intended to address the various ways internally and externally that this county should and will be responsible for its fair share to address the change in climate on this planet. And so, I think, again, I agree with our planning director, who mentioned very intently at the podium this afternoon, the fact that it is the general plan that really functions as the constitution for land use policy and guiding this county in terms of how we grow and how we protect natural resources. So, to me, this plan, our Climate Action Plan, is a complement to the general plan. I think it was also adequately referenced several times that there's even an ability to tear off the SEQA documents. to tear off the SEQA document associated with the plan. And so I think we have additional benefits there for consideration when we do so, at the right time, in the right place, and in the right context. And then that is when we consider the general plan, and any amendments thereto. So, you know, I feel very strongly that we do take this seriously. The last speaker suggested we don't, and I take a bit of offense to that, because I think we have not only taken it seriously, we've taken the time, at the request of some of you, to take it seriously. So again, I want to thank everyone involved to get us to this place, where we finally have what I think is a very thoughtful document in front of us for adoption today. And with that, I'm going to move adoption of the first-ever Sacramento County Climate Action Plan.
Second. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the motion and the second. I just want to make one clarification before we go to a vote. And so we'd had a discussion, I believe it was earlier this year, maybe even last year, about the emergency declaration and the 2030 date, and the fact that that did not comport with our proposed climate action plan. So here we are with the proposed climate action plan. I know that there's a letter and in our attachment from a law group representing Sierra Club, it looks like. I guess I'm looking for a level of confidence, and I'm not sure you can provide it, that when that aspirational goal comes and goes, because it's absolutely infeasible, that we could possibly achieve carbon neutrality by 2030 without draconian measures that I know we have neither the political nor economical nor even geographical will to achieve. What is our legal exposure, our financial exposure, our whatever exposure from our state funding partners, which I can't imagine there would be, because they are even squirmish about whether they'll be able to meet 2045? So before I vote on this, I just want to know, I want to hear directly, the incongruence between those two dates and where we stand as far as the 2030 being aspirational. And I'm happy to take it whoever wants to dive on that grenade.
Everybody's like, I'll take it. So as I often tell our team, we don't have any control over who sues. If only we had that ability, it would be wonderful. But we don't. But we, prior to making the decision not to come back and pursue an amendment to that declaration that would make the 2030 date consistent with what is in this cap, which is 2045, we did perform stakeholder outreach. We spoke with the people who previously raised the issue, and that is why you have the letter from Chatten Brown, because Chatten Brown was the firm that previously represented not just the Sierra Club, but many of the environmental groups that you have heard speak today. And we received assurance from them that they would not raise this issue in litigation if we did not change the date on the declaration. So in reliance on that, we did not come back to make that change. As you correctly pointed out, the cap is consistent with what the state is doing. It's consistent with state legislation. It's consistent with what CARB has projected. And so we do believe that the cap is legally defensible. Again, that does not mean we are insulated from litigation or from any challenges, but we do feel strongly that we can defend it, and we hope that it would be upheld in court if it were challenged on that basis.
So, and I think you hit on the very thing that I'm driving at there at the end of your comments, which is, yes, we cannot preclude someone from filing a lawsuit, but what is the exposure, the risk, the damages that could possibly be contemplated should they prevail? And it sounds like you're saying there's a very low likelihood that they would prevail on any claim.
I mean, in all honesty, it's impossible to predict. It really is. Usually, though, the remedy for cases like this would be to make us go back and revise it.
Which would delay.
Which would delay, exactly. It would kind of defeat the purpose in that it would delay implementation. It would require us to go back to the drawing board.
So if I could point out too, it's okay. Part of the reason, and we received a lot of criticism for taking so long to get to where we are, part of the reason was because we were actually crossing our Ts and dotting our Is to ensure that this was defensible to the very people who are criticizing us for taking so long. And I will say that as somebody who, you know, perhaps obnoxiously insisted on the 2030 date at one time when we passed it, that I have spoken with representatives from the Sierra Club, who have exactly said what has been said today, that they have no intention of litigation now. Of course, everybody can change their mind, but there is that level of comfort.
Supervisors, if I may add to the conversation, sorry, over here in the corner, Todd Smith, Planning Director. The, what counsel was alluding to is the conversation that I had directly with the environmental stakeholders, namely 350 Sacramento, Sierra Club, Ecos, and perhaps one other. I asked them the direct question, really, which is, if you know that 2030 is not realistically achievable, why are you telling us to meet it? And they all, to a T, said that they understood that 2030 was not achievable when they advocated for that climate emergency declaration, but they wanted to set the aspirational goal. That's essentially what the board letter says in Page 4 and 5 as a summary. Just to add to your statement, Chair Kennedy, that is the sentiment I've heard from them.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we have a motion and a second on the floor. Very much appreciate Supervisor Hume raising that issue. I mean, I think it's important for us to be comfortable with this. And I also want to echo the thanks for you, Todd, and John, and Dave, and the whole team for all your work on this, and really taking the time to make sure we get it right. I think this document is remarkable in terms of the guidance it gets us. And June, I appreciate you reminding me of one of the first rules in law school, never predict the outcome of litigation, right? So, but can you, would you mind, Todd? I think you were about to maybe queue up when Chris Norman was talking about the couple of things he brought up. Just confirm that issue in terms of implementation, 2026? And then just his concern about consistency with state standards, if they change?
I'll try to address those. Right now, the cap measure GSG 5, if that's what we're referring to.
Yes, in the context of GSG 5.
Yes. Points to beginning implementation of that measure in 2025, meaning, and I want to be careful about my words here, beginning implementation does not mean adoption. And so we have to do the work to, you know, do all the outreach, have the conversations with stakeholders, figure out what's cost-effective, figure out all those local nuances in 2025 in order to set up a potential adoption of a reach code in 2026. That will be our plan of attack, so to speak. Obviously, we have to pay attention to what the state's doing and see where the chips fall, as it were.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Supervisor Frost.
Todd, we talked a little bit about this. How does it impact us if we don't have a cap with funding? I'm understanding that there's state funding and SB 1 that will go away, basically, if we don't have the cap.
So from staff's perspective, our position is that having an adopted cap really positions the county much better to go after external funding, grant sources, whether it's state or federal, whatever the case may be. We can point to the adopted policy of the county in this cap that aligns with potential grant sources. And we've already been trying to go after grant dollars without an adopted cap. Doesn't mean we've always been successful, but certainly it positions us much better to go after those external resources.
So we're not required to have a cap for purposes of funding?
For purposes of funding, no, but for purposes of general plan consistency and compliance, yes.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Todd, and your staff, for everything you've done this last several years. Next item, please.
County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Supervisors. I just wanted to thank you all for all the work that you've done on this, and most importantly, expressing your appreciation to staff. I saw that from all of you. And that goes a long way, not just the folks sitting in this room, but all the way throughout the organization. Your leadership and your engagement and your direction has been a leading force for us to continue to work on this cap and bring this forward, so I want to thank you all for that. I also wanted to recognize, personally, recognize a couple of people. Also, Todd Smith, our Planning Director, has worked tirelessly on this. You heard all the meetings and engagement, and he's not afraid to get out in the community and ask those tough questions and have those tough conversations, so I appreciate that. Your Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force has also contributed to this under the leadership and assistance of John Lundgren, our county's sustainability manager. Also, a couple of folks, our Spark Fellows, have really helped with our GHG inventory, Alex and Jason. And then also Mr. DeFonte here as Deputy County Executive. When he came in, he said, we need to get this done. We need to make sure we get this focused on, and he's got it across the line, and I appreciate the board's support. I think he has a couple of things he would like to add to. Thank you.
Yeah, just real briefly, wanted to touch on two things. One, I know you recall passing a resolution in February of 2022 that spoke to development process improvements generally. But one of the things that resolution said is that we are well-positioned as a county to both increase housing production and address climate change at the same time. And I believe we're doing just that, and we're going to prove to the region that not only are we best positioned to do that, we are going to do that, and this climate action plan adoption is part of that equation. And with adoption today, now we're moving on to implementation, so that's the next important step. The other thing I wanted to do was thank staff. You know, John Lundgren's done a great job. There's been a lot of departments in the background working on this up to this point. A lot more work to do to implement it, but really wanted to specifically thank Todd. He has really carried the weight, not just as Director of the Division, but personally has done a ton of work on this. And this is sort of a full-circle moment for me. I think I really got to know Todd when I was managing the general plan update. That's been referenced a number of times today, and he was managing the SEQA document to address the general plan update. So, you know, I just really appreciate his efforts. This was sort of another task on top of being your Planning Director, doing this work personally. I know it's taken a toll on him and been just a tremendous amount of work, so I really wanted to thank him. He's done an amazing job leading up to today, and today just did a fantastic job presenting. So thank you very much, Todd.
Thank you.
Supervisor, can I add one more? The silent helper and assistance and guidance that we've had with June and County Council has been amazing, so I just wanted to make sure I included her in my appreciation. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to briefly make mention of during Supervisor comments here at the conclusion of our agenda this afternoon, the fact that David Villanueva, Crystal Bethke with Economic Development, one of her staff, and then who else was with us? Kent from Economic Development as well. We had a chance to join GSAC personnel today at their offices on Capitol Mall to meet, as I think I mentioned yesterday, with a group, a company from South Korea interested in expanding their electric charging network here in California, and also seriously, very seriously, exploring locations for manufacturing their charging units, which have the unique characteristic of being extremely, you know, very highly reliable. And that's a real attractive selling point for other third parties that are interested in having those charging stations on their properties, whether they be shopping malls or local government even. And so we not only had the chance to meet with them and discuss the prospect of them locating in Sacramento County this morning, but we had the chance later to take them out to Metro Air Park and literally walk them through a different, a few different types of spaces, spec spaces, that have been built out there, explaining the uniqueness of the opportunities, whether it be the fact that just the employment numbers themselves out at Metro Air Park, the number of folks that are driving electric vehicles to get to and from work presents a real opportunity for them to have their charging stations located out there, in addition to manufacturing, possibly in Metro Air Park. We pointed out to your left, the fact that we have a $1.5 billion airport upgrade project that will feature a rental car, a new rental car pavilion, another great opportunity for charging infrastructure, as well as a multi-level garage that will have charging stations. So they treated this not as kind of, you know, a fleeting meet-and-greet with Sacramento. They were really looking at this very seriously, and that goes hand-in-hand with what we just did. And so I just wanted to make that connection, that just as recently as hours ago, not even days ago, hours ago, we're already taking measures here in Sacramento County through a team approach to attract the kinds of activities, in this case, a commercial activity that is going to advance the intent of now our adopted cap. And I just think it's real fortuitous that both happened in the same 12-hour period. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I see from the board. This meeting's adjourned.